I'm, but he's here to be, to correct me where I veer off. He's the brains behind the wonderful tool.
Perfect.
To elucidate more of your project.
Well, then I will, you know, he doesn't have to be on video, but I'll give him co-hosting privileges so that he can turn his camera on and off or mute himself as necessary. Great. Okay, let's get started. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the April 2024 meeting of the Hadley School Committee. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Seconded. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Terrific. Thank you. We are moving forward first with any adjustments to the agenda. Annie, do you want to take us through that?
Sure. One, I would request that after the presentation on the field trip that Mr. Burns will give the school committee, that we invite Sarah Ross to present, which is item four D. So we just moved that right afterwards to respect their time. Go from A to D, and then we can go in order from there. What's been added to the agenda under donor recognition, also continue the discussion of HES Playground. I've added the resource, the District Policy FF, which was on the last agenda, and I've added information on school choice enrollments. Those are the only adjustments.
Great. Thank you. All right. Moving then into public comment. This is a time where members of the public can comment for up to three minutes on any of the items pertinent to the agenda. If you're interested in making a comment, please raise your digital hand and we will unmute you. Okay, seeing none, we will continue with presentation and discussion items. The first item up for discussion is the approval of the Hopkins Academy Field Trip to Europe in 2026. And here to tell us a bit about that is Professor Burns.
Evening. If I sound weird, I'm home with COVID. Yay.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
I think I got it on the German subway.
Hope you feel better soon.
Yeah, I'm already getting better. I thought I'd start by telling you a little about the trip we just got back from. We had 31 students attend and six staff, and it was Rome to Munich. And we, I am so glad we switched to this company because it was phenomenal. In Rome, we were one subway stop from the center of Rome, so we're able to get places quickly. In Innsbruck, we were a five-minute walk from the center. In Florence, we could see the Duomo from our hotel, and it was about a three-minute walk up to the central square. Munich, we had a slightly further subway ride, but it was still very reasonable. And what's nice about that is we were able to give the kids a little more freedom in the evenings to explore and to see things and really immerse in the culture. And they had a blast. Frankly, there were a lot of tears by chaperones and students when we get home because we didn't want to come back. So while I know this company is more expensive, I think, I think it was worth it big time. And one of the meals were phenomenal, the hotels were phenomenal. And the immersion activities, the Bavarian dancing, we learned how to do Bavarian dancing. There are videos out there that you'll probably see eventually to our chagrin. We just had a blast. So our next one, we like to get them on the calendar right away to give families as long as possible to be able to sign up and make payments. Originally, we looked at Spain and Morocco. And we realized, we've changed our minds, and there's a couple of quick reasons I can share why. One is cost. We realized that we were trying to move to February, so we don't always hit baseball and softball. But some very helpful people pointed out to us that February break is when basketball tournament usually is. So that's, we can't control that. Whereas April break, we're early in the seasons and the AD can be much more forgiving when it comes to scheduling things. And we don't want, we didn't want to exclude all the kids that play basketball because they might have a great season. By switching to April, the cost for Spain and Morocco went up significantly and higher than even we're comfortable with. And as we looked further into travel times, everything on that tour took five to six hours to travel between, which meant we were going to spend the equivalent of a next two whole days, two whole days on planes and two whole days on buses. And we were like, we're not going to ask families to pay $5,000 to sit on a bus in a plane. So we started looking at other options, and what we've come up with is Venice to Prague. Although we may switch it to Prague to Venice, we're working, working out those details. Because we realized with this trip, the Italians are still laid back and the Germans are not. We love Germany, but it would have been better to start in Germany and then end it in the chill place. But anyway, so the, I believe the cost of this one before discounts and everything is $5,400. It's 10 days. That includes everything, including tips. Nice thing this company does, I don't have to carry 3,000 euros with me to tip everyone. They just take care of it. There's a window, if families sign up early, they get, I think it's a $300 discount. Most of our people signed up that early last time. They can make monthly payments. They have money to help families. It's in the materials there somewhere who are lower incomes. And we are going to try this time to do some fundraising to defray at least the cost of maybe the bus to the airport. What makes it hard is because the kids signed up in such staggered things. It's hard to fundraise with five kids that have signed up. So we're going to kind of do our fundraising separate from the kids and just kind of target the general community and say, we're raising money for international travel. Maybe do some, we're, right now, we're thinking of doing some trivia nights or something with the hope of raising enough to cover the bus to the airport, because buses to airports cost a lot of money.
Indeed, they do. Thank you, Jason. It was a delight hearing about this most recent trip. And I can't wait to see some of the videos and photos that you're referring to. And thank you for taking into consideration some of that that extra time that would have been required in the Morocco trip and designing something that is a little bit more friendly. We've, we've, we're at that point in inflation and pricing where we've exceeded that 5K barrier, haven't we?
Yes.
And that is, I can imagine that that might be, that might feel daunting to some, but you've shared a bit about some of the fundraising strategies. Generally speaking, what is the philosophy if there's a family that's, you know, it's got a pretty big gap? Do, you know, how do we get there? Is there, just, I would love a little bit of your wisdom and how we try to make that happen for everyone.
I'm going to defer to Annie because I know she's working on this.
Jason, so we are in communication. I know this is a priority for the school committee and for our teachers. They don't want costs to be a barrier. However, and with that in mind, I'm working right now with the school committee's attorney to see what options are available in terms of having financial aid type programs, what those should look like. And so I'm working with the attorney to come up with procedures for that, that she's approved. So we don't have those right now, but we have to, there's a lot to take into consideration in terms of making sure that it's completely fair and everybody has access to it. Once we have those procedures landed on, I will bring those before the school committee. They don't require school committee vote. But it's just so the school committee can weigh in and ask additional questions.
Great. Thank you, Annie. Any other?
Can I add one more thing? I just wanted to add, there are cheaper companies. We used to go with EF. And the reason I switched was because the last trip to France, frankly, we stayed at some truck stops in the middle of nowhere. And I didn't feel comfortable safety-wise, but also there was literally nothing but a McDonald's in the highway. And I'm like, families, while it may be cheaper, what kind of experience is that? You're sending your kid to Europe. You don't want them staying at a truck stop.
Yeah, really good call on that. Thank you. Any other questions for Jason Burns or Annie on this trip?
Mr. Burns, I was just curious, I saw that there's the option for college credit through George.
Yes.
That's pretty cool. Do you know if any of the students are going to?
I do not know. I had some parents ask me, and I think it may already be included in their price. Like, I have to double check that.
Yeah.
I've been encouraging, the main part of the work is go on the trip. And then they just have to do a few little assignments.
Gotcha. It's cool.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Of course, as always, if you're short of chaperone, let me know.
We never seem to struggle finding chaperones.
Yeah, I figured that, but I figured I'd just throw my hat in the ring there.
Thank you.
And then just, you know, make sure that enough people and, you know, come in to the meeting and let us know what you have going on for fundraising so that, you know, we can get as much community support as possible because, you know, I think people are really in favor of helping kids get, you know, get to go on those trips.
Yeah, I will keep you posted.
Great. Any further discussion? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2026 field trip as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Mr. Burns, and also, Mr. Burns was scheduled to present, but even the topic's still a great one when we get to the open house agenda. I don't know, given how you're feeling, but when we get to the open house agenda, Senora and Mr. Burns had put together a workshop for families on service learning and international travel opportunities when you attend Hopkins. So thank you also for doing that, Mr. Burns. We appreciate it.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, and hope you feel better soon.
Thank you. It's getting better already.
Great. All right. Okay, we're going to move next to item D, health benefits of Hopkins Academy retrofit. And for that, we have Sarah Ross of Undaunted K-12.
Great. Thanks for having me back again to see you all. Always nice to see this group. Are you all seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Great. So I continue to be very excited about the work that you guys are moving forward on your facilities. And I continue to talk about the great work that you're doing to others across the state and the country. And I continue to think about you as I travel the world. And one of those moments was when I ran into this new great tool that the Harvard School of Public Health, along with some collaborators at Boston University and Oregon State, Brian's going to correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, put together to help building owners understand the health and climate benefits of some of the work they may be doing to move towards cleaner sources of fuel as you all are doing. So I thought, let me, let me test drive this new tool with one of my favorite buildings, your building in Hadley. So these slides basically go through, you know, I'm introducing to others about you and these first two slides and the study that you've been doing to figure out how to advance your building facilities. This is a little bit about the other side of the coin here, their tool. So it's this public use tool, and it has behind it, you know, the deep methodology that these experts have developed to understand the healthcare costs and the climate costs of operator buildings in different ways. And so it now allows you to kind of run these different scenarios. And so that's what I did for your building, given the publicly available data that we had from that great report that you all worked with your utility on. It's a pretty simple, you know, set of statistics, you know, kind of the profile of your energy use today. Burning, you know, number two fuel oil, burning some gas, using some electricity, and what it will look like afterwards. We can kind of compare these two states of the world. Any, any questions before I keep going here on kind of what I'm doing here to looking before and after?
No, I'm excited. Please continue, Paul.
Sarah, you pulled those data from data Krista gave you?
These are data that were in the, this report that MassSave
Oh, right.
Did. Your scoping said it gave me all the data I needed to just plug it right into their pretty simple tool, which is online.
Gotcha.
And so it gives us a nice picture of kind of the before and after. And this is kind of the summary picture, you know, and whether after 2025 or 2026, you know, there's a little number in there of the year, but the idea is that the before state and the after state is really the point. So you're looking at your energy footprint before and after, using a lot more energy, becoming more efficient. That's that first row. The second row here, the emissions footprint, you know, emitting 338 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions before. And then you'll see, you know, drastically reducing that. The air pollutants, you can't see a number, but it's just because the units are so small, there is a nice change there that you'll see in the graphics. And then the climate impact. So I should have introduced before, Brian Souza is with this collaborative team that built this tool. And so he helped me understand what these numbers represent, the kind of climate impact and health impacts. I'll do my best, and then Brian can can correct me. But basically, it's looking at the annual impact. It takes those greenhouse gas emissions of the today world or the tomorrow world and translates that into how we know putting additional greenhouse gases in the atmosphere is creating impacts in terms of dollars, climate impacts on our, on our communities, whether that's extreme weather, you know, damage to property, you know, those kinds of things. And then on the health impact side, it's, it's doing a similar thing where it's taking the air pollutants that we're putting into the atmosphere from our buildings and translating that into healthcare costs, since air pollution, we know, drives up healthcare costs. So this is not about, you know, healthcare costs for the students in the building. It's really, you know, your building, like most of our buildings, are contributing to air pollutants and greenhouse gas emissions. How do we take our individual contributions and kind of turn those into costs? And so these are annual numbers, and you're seeing how they, you know, dramatically fall when we make these improvements to your building. So that's pretty cool. Any questions there before I hop on? Yeah, go ahead.
If you, if you wouldn't mind, you or Brian, maybe others know, but if I were asked, I'd want to be able to answer this question. So in that calculation, can, can you offer a concrete example of a climate impact? Like, how a dollar amount is assigned to it, and then the reduction, and similarly with health impact? So an example of what that might represent, and that people could wrap their head around, and then how, not all the formula, but how do you arrive at a dollar amount and the change?
I'm so glad I have Brian here. Brian, can I speak over you?
Yeah, for sure. Can everyone hear me okay? Just to make sure.
Yes, welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name's Brian Souza. I work over at Boston University. So to answer your question about, to start with the climate impacts. So essentially, have you all heard of like the social cost of carbon before? So that's basically the metric.
Let's not assume that the listening.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so basically, what we're using is this value called the social cost of carbon. And essentially, what that value does is it looks at the, the impacts that are associated with climate change. So sea level rise, impacts on agriculture, heat waves, and things like that. And the, basically, the impacts that those will have on our society and, and therefore, like the economy, and puts that into a dollar value. So what you're able to do is for every ton of, say, like carbon dioxide that you emit into the atmosphere, that is associated with a increased risk of, of worse climate change impacts. And then based on those economic damages from climate change, you're able to associate a dollar value per that ton. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just going to say it back to you really quickly. And again, a lot of people watch school committee, and we're grateful for that. And this project's really important. I know people in town want to understand it. So I'm from Southern California. When you said like rising sea level, that's a great example, right? So more carbon, this happens, sea level goes up, or wildfires, nobody can get home insurance anymore. So that's like the cost of rebuild, the cost of increased insurance costs, things like that, be potentially some of those costs that you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Depending on the, the number that, based on the model that you're using and the number that you're using, there are certain impacts that are included or not included in that simulation. But basically, yes. One thing I would note is that when you are looking at a, the dollar impact that, say, the emissions from this school would have, it's not saying those impacts are happening locally. That's a global estimate. So it's encapsulating the total impacts happening globally around the world, incorporating that into that dollar value. So you're not able to attribute it to one, one specific outcome or one specific location. But I think this is a good segue into talking about the health impacts because those are local. And so with the health impacts, essentially, what you're looking at is different types of air pollutants that are associated with those same emissions that your greenhouse gases are coming from. And it's looking, we run a model that basically simulates how the distribution of that, that air pollution moves around from where it's located from or where it's coming from. And essentially, based on the populations that are around that source of pollution, it estimates the increased risk of mortality from that air pollution. And then, so looking at that increased risk of mortality, we use a economic value called the value of statistical life. And that is basically just a economic value that is, it's basically looking at how much you are willing to pay to have a reduction in the, your risk of dying, basically. And so that's, it's not, it's not incorporating, say, this air pollution is causing more cases of asthma, which is therefore causing more burden on the healthcare system in your community. But it is saying that this air pollution is causing more cases of asthma that could potentially increase mortality rates around that community.
And if people wanted to understand or learn more about what you have, and maybe it's later in the slides, is there a way for them to access additional information on this? If people are listening and they want to follow up?
For sure, for sure. Yeah, I think we can link you to the website. That should have an FAQ that answers a bunch of these questions. If anybody really wants to dive deep into the research, we recently published a paper that came out earlier, or late last year. That kind of really goes into the nitty gritty of where we're pulling all the data from. But yeah, so we can, we can provide all that.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. And I just want to say, although the the climate impact is something that is aggregate globally, you mentioned agriculture as an indicator of, and I know that Hadley Agriculture has seen a lot of impact from flooding and blight, a lot of crops being impacted as a result. And so it is the kind of impact that hasn't been seen in years past. It feels very, very real and tangible. So yeah, thank you for sharing that. And please continue with the presentation.
Thank you. The next set of slides, you know, basically, again, show you the before and after, tying them back to the different fuel use. So you're seeing your number two fuel oil is really driving a lot of your energy usage. It's also driving the lion's share of your greenhouse gas emissions and the lions, a lot of your air pollution also. You're seeing these climate costs come down dramatically. This is just the graphical version of that. The last slide, I just wanted to show you because it was something we, we talked about early on, was one of the nice things this tool does is it benchmarks the carbon, the greenhouse gas emissions coming from your building against the policy that's now enforced in Boston that sets limits on how much emissions buildings can produce before they incur a fine. And that threshold that Boston is subject to, you know, gets more intense through time. So that's the the bars that you're seeing in gray that go down through time. So there's a certain standard for the 2025, 29 period. It gets more stringent, it gets more stringent, it gets more stringent. And were that Boston policy to be extended statewide, as legislators are talking about doing right now, let's just say they took the same policies Boston has, right now, your building would be pretty significantly over that threshold that's, you know, going to hit Boston properties in 2025. When you do this retrofit, as you'll see, you're, you're moving yourselves. Excuse me, into a position where you're even, you know, on par with the 2020, 2040 kind of threshold. So versus not doing that investment would leave you kind of at risk from future policy perspective. Sorry, I usually have water handy for just this moment, and of course, just this moment, I didn't. This is the last slide. So any questions on this? This is policy benchmarking makes sense. So good future-proofing decision that you're making to make this switch because as Massachusetts continues to get serious about meeting its climate targets, buildings are a big part of getting, where they need to get serious. And so I certainly expect this Boston policy to in some form get expanded statewide, and you guys are setting yourselves up to be in compliance with that.
Sarah, I want to make sure that I'm reading this slide the right way. And what I'm seeing on the left is the red bar indicating what is permissible in the year 2022 for a Boston-based building, whereas on the right, in 2025, that will become the new standard. Is that, am I reading it the right way?
I'm so glad you asked, because no, on the left, that red bar is your building.
Our building.
Building today.
I see.
And your level of emissions compared to the new threshold that is about to start to hit in Boston for 2025. You currently are over the threshold, that first threshold that's going to hit Boston 2025, and pretty significantly. Right?
And the Boston threshold is the dark gray?
Yeah, so there's five Boston thresholds because they get more serious through time. So the years that you're seeing at the bottom say, all right, we're going to start you off in 2025, and we're going to hold you to a certain standard, right? Just under .004. And we're going to give you some more time, but we're going to, we're going to tighten the belt. We're going to tighten the belt. We're going to tighten the belt, right? We're going to make these standards even more stringent. So yeah, the red bar is you in both cases. It's you before you make this change, way out of compliance with the Boston standard. The red on the, on the right-hand graph is you after you make this investment in ground source heat pumps. Ah, now you are wildly in compliance, not just for this first threshold, but the thresholds to come for several decades. It only become by 2040 that you'd even need to do any more work, right?
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm so glad you asked. I'm sorry. I was not clear the first time around.
Not at all. Christine?
I'm, I'm just curious. I don't know if you can answer this, but so if Boston is creating these benchmarks, what are they doing to, for financial incentives to help schools get there?
Well, yeah, I mean, this, the difference, so this is all under Mayor Wu. She's committed a large budget to the Green New Deal for Boston Public Schools. And it's, yeah, a huge financial commitment that she has made to support, you know, not only.
They're providing help for this.
They, they are providing. I mean, this is all kind of city budget negotiation, so I'm not an expert on it. But, but yeah, this is, this is part of her commitment to help. The, it looks like Brian wants to jump in and help me out here.
Oh, I just wanted to add, in addition to what Sarah had mentioned, there's also things that the state can do in terms of making the electrical grid greener, which will indirectly help your building. So as, like Sarah had shown before, mostly the emissions were looking, were coming from like the direct use of fuel oil in your building. But as you switch to eventually electrifying, and then as the grid itself. But as you switch to eventually electrifying, and then as the grid itself becomes cleaner by running off renewables. Then your associated emissions will also drop. Um, and that's something that's included right now in the, in the tool. Um, when you're able to look at future scenarios, it actually incorporates uh, projected um, changes to the grid. Um, and how that's expected to look. Um, and we're looking at incorporating like other hypothetical future scenarios as well.
Is there a, any other state incentives other than, I mean, I know we're looking at um. The Green New Deal and infrastructure, but does the state itself have any other financial grants available? Or I'm just trying to figure, you know, uh, see if there are any other avenues in which to um, help with the retro. That's all.
It, it's a great question. So um, I believe as your superintendent and some other members know that uh, Massachusetts School Building Authority is, has committed to bring to the marketplace a new program as of January twenty twenty-five, which is a heat pump retrofit program. So they understand that districts need more financial support to do this. And so um, you know, they're currently in the process of selecting a consultant to help them design that program. Uh, to help, you know, really kind of shape it in a way that'll give districts the support they need. You know, how best to, to disseminate the resources, you know, all those nitty gritty kind of programmatic questions. So I think we should expect to see some more support specifically for heat pump retrofits from the MSBA. That seems pretty clear. And this is an active, um, you know, a big part of the state's policy conversation is how do we fund this very expensive work? And so things like the clean heat standard is another policy that they are talking about um, potentially implementing, which would generate revenue to help pay for some of this work. So it's a, it's a topic of ongoing conversation, how we fund this massive transformation that's needed in our buildings. Uh, never mind other infrastructure to do this work, but it's a, it's a great question, Christine.
And if I could just um, for the viewing public who may not have heard any of our conversations in previous months about our investigation into uh, use of uh, geothermal um, and other potential cleaner alternatives. Um, we uh, we had already approved in our capital plan uh, replacing boilers in year two or three at the tune of about one point eight million. And what we learned through Sarah and Undaunted K twelve was that uh, a, and also through um, MassSafe and Eversource was that uh, between the Inflation Reduction Act and Eversource incentives, we happen to uh, qualify for. Uh, we, we may be able to get geothermal not at the three point six million that it would cost, but rather nine hundred thousand. Um, so substantially reducing our economic impact to begin with. And uh, what we're hearing now is that the Massachusetts School Board Association uh, MSBA, I think uh, that gives new money for schools. Uh, has also announced a new program for funding for schools to go down this path, which would potentially bring our impact even lower than nine hundred thousand. Do I capture that correctly, Sarah?
Yeah, I, I have no idea what the qualification criteria will be. Um, those that have been in the school's land for a while understand that, you know, the, the list of um, people who want money from the MSBA is long and the people who get it is short. So.
Right.
Um, I don't know to what degree the district could count on those funds, right? I think that's, that's an open question. So I wouldn't want to set expectations that that is a definite. I think that the IRA money is, is there for you all and does not require you to compete. The MassSafe incentives that you've discussed is there for you all and does not require you to compete. I think the MSBA money will, you know, be harder to come by, and so it would be icing on the cake.
Indeed. And all, and, and the bottom line is the uh, the economic value proposition is already there. That nine hundred thousand versus one point uh, eight million for a traditional boiler system is, is already a, a no-brainer proposition with the incentives, and it only gets better potentially. Great, thank you.
Great.
Yes, Sarah, I have three questions. Um, just to clarify, the, the Boston standard, that is just a city government standard. It's not a state got standard that applies to just that state, city. Okay. Um, on your slides, you had a caveat up in the top that wasn't in what the packet that she sent us. Do you, who, do, does that include the onsite solar? Have we talked about that, the note?
Yeah, no, it, it does not include the fact that you guys will be using onsite solar. So that, you know, as Brian was mentioning before, one of the aspects of this tool is, you know, they're looking at the electricity grid of today. And it's not perfectly clean right now, we know, right? Even our electricity grid has emissions associated with it. And they can look at that through time. Well, you guys, by installing solar, you're saying, well, we're not even going to use some of that powerful electricity grid. We're going to make some of our own, and that's a hundred percent clean. Right? That is not integrated into this. So the story is even better than the one you are seeing here. This story assumes that you're getting a hundred percent of these elec, electrons, you know, from, from that grid uh, in its, in its current dirty, clean, in transition form.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. And the third question maybe is for Annie and Chris, if he's on. Um, what is the status of that exploration into the geothermal and such?
Uh, Chris, you want, or I can say I believe that you guys selected uh, an engineering and design firm. Is Chris on the call? He is on the call.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, we select, you guys selected the firm. And uh, Chris, do you want to pick up where they're at with the work at this point?
Sure, yes. So I put together the contract, we both signed it, it's all sent out. They are coming tomorrow morning for their first walkthrough of the building.
Awesome. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Annie. And thanks, Sarah and Brian. Really appreciate that readout. It's really helpful information.
Great. Pleasure. Hope it could be more context and additional motivation as you go down this path.
Definitely some way to quantify the benefits. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Sarah and Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you too.
All right, we're going to move forward with the remainder of our agenda, if I can just hand over to it. Okay, we are uh, on item B, Hopkins Academy Fields Update. And for that, we have Chris here.
Okay, yep, Sarah, I'm back again. Uh, so the fields are moving along. Um, unfortunately, the weather really has not been our friend, it seems, since we started this. So um, you know, rain has just caused a lot of floods on the field. And what that did was really put us behind schedule. Um, really unavoidably, but nevertheless, we're not um, you know, at the point we would be. Um, at this point in time, the sod is being laid down. Um, but you do have an item in your meeting package. Um, we received a letter, oh, about ten days ago from Berkshire Design. Just alerting us of the risk involved with playing on the sod before um, the suggested timeframe. Um, has elapsed between installation when we actually use the fields. And that was that it, uh, in their opinion, it would void the warranty on the fields. So you know, if there was damage to the sod or section, sections of it did not root and survive. Uh, you know, the transplant between where it was and the fields, um, that the contractor would not be on the hook for the replacement of the sod, the district would be. Um, and so they just, you know, really wanted to make sure we were aware of that. Uh, when I received that email, I did forward it on to Anne with um, a comment that I, I thought maybe the school committee should be aware of this as well. Uh, it's certainly not something, you know, when you receive information like that, you really don't want to just read it and then put it away and not alert anyone of the, you know, potential risks involved. So um, there's a copy of it in your meeting package. Um, I have been in contact with uh, both Berkshire Design and the contractor to try to get this um, straightened out and, you know, settled so that we all know exactly where we stand on it. Um, I sent an email to them on Friday, just asking to the contractor, asking where um, where we stood with the warranty. You know, um, the specs called for seeding. Originally, we were going to seed the fields. Then, as the weather didn't cooperate last year, we switched it over to sod in a good portion of the areas. Um, hoping that, okay, the sod's planted, it's, you know, relatively instant grass, we'll be able to play on it. Um, then, you know, the rain continued in the spring, which delayed um, the installation of the sod again. Um, and so, you know, where exactly does this put us with the warranty? Um, I didn't get a response on Friday, so I reached out again this morning just to give a heads up and say, hey, you know, did you get the email? I, I, you know, like to hear your thoughts on it. Um, and, and they responded that uh, we would be, you know, they talked about it over the weekend and we'd be able to discuss it at our Wednesday meeting. We have meetings every Wednesday morning about the fields. Uh, and I responded that, you know, the school committee is discussing this tonight. It would certainly be helpful if we had this information today rather than Wednesday. And uh, offered to meet with them this afternoon if they had time. Um, I did get a call from Greg O'Masta um, saying that they, uh, first, you know, the, the general opinion was that baseball and softball were much easier on um, the turf than, say, soccer or football. Um, you know, in terms of the, the running and stopping hard and, you know, um, you know, certainly with football tackling really chews up the grass, you know, so. Um, but, you know, there was no mention of the warranty, so I asked him, I said, here, here's my dilemma. We have these fields, we have a substantial amount of money tied up in the grass. We want to be sure that if something happens, uh, you know, we're still covered. Um, Greg did respond that they would honor the warranty um, for the sod. Um, and so I, uh, you know, that, that was on the phone. Fred and I were at the fields this afternoon when Greg called. And it was a verbal um, assurance that they would cover us and, and make the necessary repairs. Um, I did, when I got back to the office, email them and say, you know, I'd really love to have this, something written down where we could all sign it and, and just have it agreed upon. Um, and while that was, you know, later in the day, uh, and so I haven't gotten a response on that yet. So unfortunately, there's no assurance that they, you know, that they want to put it in writing. Um, but he's been pretty good really to us about um, you know, covering us when, when we have any kinds of concerns or anything. You know, we've had a, a few items where we're like, jeez, we don't really like that. We, we prefer it something else. Um, and he has gone out of his way to accommodate our requests, often at no charge to us, which is certainly appreciated. Um, and so I, I, I'm assuming at the Wednesday meeting, although, you know, there's no guarantee on this, that we'd be able to put something together, but that's where we're at right now, is the request to have, uh, you know, some kind of document saying, okay, we had sod instead of seed, there's not going to be a sixty-day um, rest period to allow it to root like we would have with seed. You know, obviously, an entirely different process than, than laying down sod. Um, and the warranty would still remain even if we use the fields after the shortened resting period. Um, so I, I unfortunately, I can't, you know, definitively say that they will put something in writing. Um, I, I wouldn't be surprised if they did, but that's where we're at right now.
May I just add, so I think what we are trying to get to from here, uh, Chris and I both want to thank O'Masta. As Chris pointed out, they're an excellent company, a local company. They've done a lot of work for the schools in the town and we're extremely appreciative of how they always try to go above and beyond to work with us. The idea of having something clearly written out is so everybody is clear on what is being promised or not promised. And then we'd ask uh, the Dupre, Kim Dupre, to take a look at it, the school committee's attorney. Just again, this is to make sure that everybody's understanding what's being agreed to. Um, and then if it were possible um, to um, begin using the fields earlier than we anticipate, based on the letter we got originally from Berkshire Design. Um, we would move forward with that, um, if we were certain that there was no financial risk to the school department, which is essentially by the town. Um, and so that's what we would be looking for. But right now, as of today, in this moment, they're not ready. And we're trying to work toward a, a resolution. We just don't have that right now.
Thank you, Annie and Chris. Um, appreciate you explaining this. I think it makes a lot of sense to have something in writing, and I'm optimistic that we will be able to get there. Uh, if we, if we don't, what are, what is, what is the potential implication for um, plans that we had for those fields this spring?
So Fred has um, moved, uh, originally scheduled, I should say, all of our home games in May and early June, rather than spread out throughout the season, really just to allow for um, you know, the fields to actually get the grass to uh, to root. Um, what it would mean is, and, and I know that Fred's been looking for alternate fields to play on. Um, you know, if we could use any other fields um, in another town. I know he looked at UMass trying to rent the field from them for our games as well. Uh, he's met with very little success. So if we're unable to use the fields, then we would have to have it where every game uh, the season would be played away. Even if, even if Hadley was the home team in the game, as far as, you know, the batting order. Um, they would still be played at the opposing team's field. Um, so, you know, of course, there, there are costs involved with that for us. And then obviously, we have transportation costs that we normally wouldn't expect to have. Um, but that, that would really be where we're at at this point in time.
Another question I have for you, Chris, is what is the financial exposure of having to replace the sod? And is it just the sod that is potentially at risk uh, by using it before that sixty-day period? Or are there other aspects to the design that are also potentially null, according to Berkshire Design's uh, letter?
So when we did the sod, we went out, um, I believe it's three hundred and thirty feet in the outfield, uh, left and right fields, three hundred and fifty feet to center field, which, you know, that's, you know, we're talking Fenway Park size, or actually even a little longer than Fenway Park in some spots. Um, so, you know, the assumption is that no balls are going to be hit further than that. That's where the sod ends and the seeding starts. So again, the assumption was that, well, there's not going to be um, outside of the occasional stray ball that might roll there or something. There's not going to be a lot of foot traffic in, you know, the seeded areas. So we, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about that. Um, as far as, you know, we, we also asked Berkshire for, you know, an opinion on, well, if we say put sod on the baseball field and use that, and also put sod as we replace the infield of the JV field from phase one. What if we didn't use the JV field, but we used uh, the varsity field only? Um, that was a little tougher question to get an answer for. Um, you know, they asked around their office and they really couldn't give us an answer other than, you know, it's kind of hard to prove where kids were and where kids weren't, you know, so. Um, it, it, it would pretty much, you know, it, it's a tough call as, as far as that goes. Um, but you know, that, that was the plan when we switched to the sod in these general areas is that we're going to make it big enough where it would be the size of a regular baseball or softball field. Um, as far as the financial exposure, I mean, the total cost of the sod is around, because we've, we've added and subtracted in areas. But I would say it's around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Chris. Um, we have a couple of questions. Um, I uh, I know Joyce's hand was up first, but Joyce, if you could hang tight. Um, I'd love to get our school committee perspectives out here first. Christine?
I, I guess my question is, so whether permitting, and base, you know, best case scenario is the sod goes down and we play on it. What happens if we run into weather like we had last year? What is that going to do to the fields?
You, you mean in terms of if it's swampy like, like it was last year? Uh, there's a number of things. First of all, the drainage in the fields, um, especially in the areas where it was swampy, was actually doubled from what we had last year. So we had drain lines every twenty feet. Now we have drain lines every ten feet. Um, we also did significant work, which apparently was the cause of part of this problem, um, to the uh, drainage culvert that runs along the side of the field, all the way down to Bay Road, I believe. Um, and a lot of work was done to that, and it was great when we walked out to see it after they basically dredged uh, that trench to see that the water was running away from the field. Uh, prior to that work, the water level, it was kind of stuck because there were so many higher areas of silt and weeds that had grown there that it was acting kind of as a dam. And so the water was actually flowing back into the fields, um, rather than flowing away from it. So all of that is, is obviously being addressed. Uh, but if it came down to, say, using the varsity field, which is at the far corner of the field and has much better drainage than, you know, the, the corner where the JV field is, um, that would be an incident where we'd. That would be an incident where we'd have to take it on a game by game basis. And, you know, Fred walked out, I mean, Fred doesn't want these fields to get chewed up, you know, any more than any of us do. So that would be a situation where he would have to check the field, see the conditions and call it accordingly if it was needed to be.
So even, you know, I'm just looking at in terms of whether or not, you know, we should maybe revisit this after, you know, in our, at our May meeting and then, you know, that and talk about possibly using the fields for tournament. But not have them, you know, giving it the best shot at success by putting it off for a little bit. I just
Time then, I think that just, just knowing, talking to Fred about all he's done to rearrange. It really puts the season in jeopardy. It's that significant. And with nine seniors on the team, I think we really need to take a good, hard look about whether we can make this work. And if you have O'Masta saying sod is very different than seed, baseball is very different than soccer and football. You know, what's our level of risk? Is the level of risk exposure really a hundred and eighty thousand? Or might we have a couple of spots that get damaged, such as you need to repair, and it's more like a couple thousand? And is that worth it compared to?
Is that our hundred and eighty or is that their hundred and eighty?
I think it's, well, Chris outlined it pretty clearly, right? So we've got a verbal agreement. Obviously, we're, we're looking to get the written agreement. We have a written agreement, then I, I don't think there's much of a conversation. If we don't, I think we just need to reassess then and say, what truly is the risk? Is it a hundred and eighty or is it there spots that might get damaged due to a couple of games getting played? Is repairing spots a hundred and eighty thousand? I mean, if there's a widespread loss of the entire sod, which I think would be highly unlikely, then you'd want the whole hundred and eighty refunded. But if there's spots damaged due to baseball games, then maybe we take it on our own to have that risk to repair so that we can have a season. I think there's really significant concerns here that we need to have, be able to play some games at home. And I think Fred's done everything he can to push that off as long as he can. But I think risk, you know, defining that risk is, is helpful. But if, if O'Masta says, no, they're gonna put in writing what they've thankfully committed to verbally, then frankly, I don't see there's a risk. They've negated that.
Thank you, Christine. Ethan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I like both sides. There's probably not a bigger sports guy out there than me and I'm, I, I think Paul, I'd push back a little bit. I'm not too worried. I mean, I get that these kids might not have a home game, but they're still gonna have a full season. They're still gonna have the opportunity to play in the tournament. And I, I can't help but think about how this project has kind of gone and how challenging it's been at times. And how we're staring down the barrel of asking the town for a lot of money in the next five to 10 years. And I just want to be conscious of the fact that for a couple of home games that could potentially impact field. And again, I say all this knowing that weather could impact or not impact this, right? We could have a beautiful spring and the fields could be great. And we could get the kids out there and I think that would be awesome. But I, I just worry that we're like saying like, oh, we need a couple of baseball games on our home field. So let's let's take that risk. And you're right, Paul, I don't know what the risk is. It's probably not huge. But I also know that you know, we're just putting sod down on the baseball fields and not the rest of the field. We're gonna seed it. Like, there's part of me that says, let's just seed it and do it right this time. Instead of rushing this project forward, like it feels like we're doing a little bit. And I don't think, I don't know that that's necessarily the answer, but I just, I keep thinking like, are we doing this for a couple of baseball games? That the kids are gonna get to play anyways. And again, like I said, like, there's nobody bigger that wants to see these kids play sports than me. I just, I don't want to mess these fields up. I want to do it right.
And Paul, you know, as much as I do, how hard it was on the kids when they missed their basketball season because of COVID. So I have every sympathy and every, you know, I completely understand how the parents and the seniors want to play on the fields as much as I did, as, you know. So that's, but is, is it fiscally responsible in terms of you know, taking a risk? If there's no risk, that's one thing, but I just can't you know, justify us having to pay for something when we're not, you know, when we've been told we really shouldn't be doing it. And I always live by, you know, Murphy's Law, if it can go wrong, it will. So I, I just worry that we could, you know, turn around, I don't want to have to say sorry, but probably wasn't our best decision at any time. That's all. You know, I mean, if they could, I mean, by tournament, that would be awesome. At least if we could have something to offer, I just don't know if it's worth the risk now.
So just, just to be clear, the sod will be done tomorrow. So I wasn't sure you knew that sod, sod's already in. It'll be finished tomorrow. I'm a little confused. If O'Masta who's laying the sod and is holding the warranty writes that they're not concerned that we start playing May tenth, are, are you, are you still concerned about risk? Say if you use it prior to that, they will repair it.
I, 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 I get that part. I just, I'm thinking about the fact that we're gonna ask the town for a lot of money over the next five to 10 years. And if we're just willing to like bank on, like, oh, if this warranty works out and the weather works out, then we're fine. I, I, I just don't know what it looks like to the, to the public for a couple of baseball games. This is kind of where I land.
Well, so I, I think we should talk to the athletic director. I think the language was the season might not continue unless we can play at home. So I don't want to minimize the couple of home games that language. I think it might be more significant than that. We should talk to the athletic director. I, I'm still at a loss. If the company who's installing the, the product says the warranty holds, even if they may tend, I see no risk to us.
Except that the fields are gonna have to get repla- repaired again.
And it'll be, it'll be repaired at their cost.
I just, I, I feel like this project has taken a long time. We've made adjustments throughout it. And this just feels like, why can't we just wait the two months like we're supposed to?
So that to me is a low, I mean, from my understanding, it really does jeopardize the season. And for nine seniors for an important sport where there's no financial cost, there might be, we might have to lay, they might have to lay a couple more rolls of sod. It could, you know, maybe we have to wait a little extra here or there. I really think that benefit is, is worth that risk.
Yeah, I just, I didn't get the sense that it was gonna jeopardize the season. I, I'd heard that they were gonna have to play all away games, which wouldn't be great, but they still get a season.
I'm not sure that's true. I'm not sure that last part that they still get a season. Sure. I think we should ask Fred.
And I think that's part of the problem is we, we don't know what O'Masta is gonna put in their letter and we don't know. I think that, I think that's part of the problem is we're just not, we don't have all the answers yet.
Well, if they confirm what they wrote, what they said verbally in writing, hopefully, Chris, you can get that. Then I'm fine. I mean, I think that really just takes away all risk and the benefit of the kids being able to have a season. It's pretty important to those families and those kids. I really think, honestly too, if we said, no, we're not willing to take that risk, I think you'd have nine families in your office saying, come on, that's a really low risk. Can't you just, can we just accept that risk? When the company is already saying that they'll warranty it if you start playing and they'll repair it with no cost. It's pretty good.
Paul, I, I tend to agree with you that if O'Masta can put this in writing and it, it essentially obviates what Berkshire Design is saying that there that it would be warranted, then it, there is a case that we may, it's a manageable level of risk. And I, I, I truly understand the perspectives of all, this has been a project that has taken so long. And we are almost at the finish line. It's had its bumps irrigation wise and with all this rain, this rain is not going away. This is a new normal in terms of climate impact. So we're almost there. It sounds like there may be a viable solution. Let's make sure that, that what we mean about the level of risk for the baseball season and Chris DeJardine and Annie, if you could close the loop in terms of that letter and writing and also finding out what that impact is to the baseball team. Let's revisit this in May. Hopefully we won't have to revisit it. If there's a letter and the school attorney is like, yep, you're, you're clear, then we shouldn't have to, but, but worst case, we'll revisit in May. And I
It's very good to go, at least for the beginning of the season?
That, that's the question, right? So if the first home game is May tenth, we need to decide before that. We should decide next week after we hear from O'Masta.
But I also think we need to get that, that part of it correct because I, I mean, there are the, there is the ability to move games. And I know Fred has been working diligently to do that. I think, I don't, I don't think we, we rush this.
I don't think we should assume we know what Fred's dealing with. If we have questions about that, I, I think you laid it out well, if you may, right? Let's see what O'Masta says. See what our attorney says. To me, if O'Masta comes back and writes something that our attorney says is you know, obviates the risk, I'm good. I don't need to hear from Fred. If you all need to, but we, I would encourage us to do that prior to May tenth, since we have a home game planned the start of the season. We can't wait till our next school committee meeting to decide this.
In closing about this, I would say, Annie, if you could wrap your mind around a- all of this and, and get that information, if we need to have an emergency school board meeting as we have in the past, then please call us for availability early in May to bring a quorum of us together to make any decisions that need to be made. Hopefully it won't come to that. Hopefully this isn't very straightforward.
This is what I hear is my takeaways. As we said, and I want to underscore how helpful O'Masta has been. What we want to do is to make sure that this is clearly stated in writing, that the school committee attorney has gone over it so that we're not hearing something O'Masta is not saying. Just want everybody to be clear. They're a great business partner. We want to be fair to them. We want to be fair to us. If at the end of that, it is clear that no, that the warranty essentially that the warranty remains intact, then there would be no reason not to move forward. The warranty remains intact. It's almost like the Berkshire letter never arrived, right? I just, I'm seeing head nods. So you're okay with that? The attorney says this agreement is the same, your warranty is intact regardless of what you do. Then we would be in a position to move forward and we would still update the school committee in May, but I wouldn't need to convene the school committee prior to that. Does that sound right?
Sounds right to me. Yes. Thank you.
Something?
Yes, please.
To that, I, I just want to underscore the fact that, you know, asking for this to be spelled out in writing by no means constitutes a lack of trust on our part with O'Masta at all. They've been very honorable with this whole process. It, it's really just, you know, it's prudent business practice really to just make sure on both sides, quite honestly, just to make sure everyone is on the same page.
Thank you for underscoring that. Absolutely. Any other discussion from school committee members on this topic? All right. And Joyce, thank you so much for waiting until the school committee deliberated. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Would love to hear your perspective on this. I know you're a, an OG as it relates to this project. I think it was, the land was purchased under your school committee tenure.
It, it was and a long coming. So of course I'm anxious to see that the kids are actually able to use the fields also. Offering that glue, Sue Gluckowski is our risk management person for the town. So if there was any doubt that Chris could contact her, if you, if he had to for any type of things, but I've always learned over the years, you cross your Ts and dot your Is. No matter if somebody says verbally what they're going to do, you always need it in writing, especially since you have received a letter. I mean, your, your design team that has suggested that you don't use the fields as soon as you would like to because I know Mast is very reputable. I, I've known him throughout the years. I have no problem with him. But a deal is a deal and a project is a project. So you always want to make sure that your design team is also in alignment with the people that are doing the project. So that was just what I was, I had to offer. And if Chris needed to contact Sue for any other type of thing that he needed because of the contracts or anything like that, he most certainly can. So just leaving it at that and hoping it can be used. If it can't, then, you know, that's, that's gonna be up to you all, what, what you decide. So.
Thank you, Joyce. And great suggestion about Sue. Chris, you have all the information needed to be able to pursue that if needed?
Yes.
Excellent. Terrific. All right. Thank you, Joyce.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We don't have to vote on anything about this. We can move on. And so thank you, everyone, for contributing to the discussion. I'm, I'm looking forward to positive resolution on this. Okay, we are going to move to item C, donor recognition for the Hopkins Academy Fields and the Hadley Elementary School Playground. Annie and Chris?
Yeah, I can summarize some of the discussion we had in policy subcommittee. Of course, Ethan and Chris, correct anything that isn't on point. So we look closely at the current policy, which is linked into your agenda for the school committee. You folks also looked at that last month. And we're clear that the current policy really talks about naming facilities. And the conversation we've been having is more around donor recognition. The committee did, the subcommittee didn't feel as though we necessarily needed a separate and distinct policy around donor recognition. It would be difficult to come up with a policy that captured every single scenario. Procedures, which it seems like we're already following these protocols that made sense. And that align with our naming policy would be that should a group, usually we have a group like for the HES playground and we have a liaison for that, for the fields. We have a school committee liaison. So Chris and Paul respectively. That when folks are working with groups that are fundraising, if they come up with a suggestion, that group comes up with a suggestion about how to recognize donors. In this case, I'm not talking about things like recognizing them in in newsletters and sending thank you letters, but actual physical recognition. So a plaque affixed to a space or some type of physical object that recognized people, that that would be brought to the entire school committee, a description of said recognition, what it is, dimensions, visuals, if we have those, where that object would go, how it would be maintained, who's responsible for that, and who would be recognized, you know, what level of donor would be recognized. This is essentially kind of what Tara brought in those levels of donor recognition. We did this quite a while ago with the fields as well. So we thought that those procedures and protocols seem to be working well in terms of the Hopkins Academy Fields. Again, right now it's kind of touch and go of when that first game is. I would like to say generally speaking that before there is a home game or on that day, we would certainly like to invite everybody who is contributed to bringing the fields, making that vision a reality. I invite Hadley Media to be there and verbally recognize everybody who's contributed. Board of Trustees, CPA, East Hampton Savings Bank, countless individual donors on and on and on and families. Recognize those folks. I know that Fred had some ideas about a way, kind of a, a, a way to, a physical object that would have folks' names on it. And when we have more information on what that might look like, we would bring that to school committee, go through those things. Here's what it is. Here's where it would go. Here's who's taking care of it. Here's whose name is on it and, and why. And then we would have a second, we would ask folks, donors, invite them back again on the fields. Donors could go to one, both or none. And we would ask Hadley Media if they would kindly record that. So we're thinking for the field. So that's the general discussion the policy subcommittee had around donor recognition and also what we're thinking for the fields. And I know Tara might have some updates on the HES playground as well.
I just asked Annie to put it on here in regards to, we started a discussion last time about donor recognition. Well, I'm glad to see that the policy can make a look at the current policy. I, I personally agree. I don't know that it needs to be changed. And then I guess from the perspect- perspective of the group that's working to fundraise for the playground. I, I think that makes it pretty clear what we would need to do. We did come with that original donor recognition document. But since then, and, and that wasn't Um, but since then, and, and that wasn't true, um, but since then, um, we have, um, talked about considering adjusting that. So what I will plan on doing is, um, we actually have a meeting on Wednesday. Our next meeting is on Wednesday. Um, talking with the group about a little bit more specifics and make sure that, we can provide all that, um, specifics in the request that Annie just named off and bring it back to school committee. Um, and, you know, I just, I, I do want to say that I, I know that, you know, something such as the fields is, um, a much larger financial, um, debtment to people who have donated, but I, you know, I've kind of started paying a little bit more attention to my surroundings. We've got a plaque on the wall in the cafeteria for the mural that was done. We've got the plaque for the climbing wall, um, that was done, um, in the elementary gymnasium, and, you know, various things done and, and, you know, um, I, I don't think it's bad of us to recognize, because again, it's the same, you know, a lot of the same people who are donating, at the, at the fields project are here again donating for us at the elementary school and have in the past. Um, so I, you know, I don't think it's wrong of us to, to find ways to be able to recognize them, in any way, shape, or form, um, because we want to show our appreciation and, and I don't think it negates any um, recognition in the past either, right? I, I think it just, you know, school committee could technically turn over, um, you know, every three years we could have turnover and opinions change. Um, and this is where we're at right now, and I, I think it's good to say, we haven't done in the past consistently. Here's where we're at now. Here's what we'd like. Um, I just think in our small community, we have a lot of people who are, really, um, really gracious to the schools. So I think it, I think it's, I think it's, small token to be able to appreciate them and whatever we can. So, long and short, um, I will plan on talking about that with the group and, um, coming up with a little bit more specific. Um, deciding on kind of what this recognition would look like and try to provide you with, um, as concrete of an example, um, what we would request for it to look like and bring it back for.
Um, I have the update for everything else, but I figured I, you'd want me to wait down to school committee updates down there, so I'll, I'll update that later.
Great. Thank you, Tara. Yes, um, we should keep the scope just to the donor recognition, and thank you for that update, uh, Annie, as well. Um, and just to something that you said, Tara, I don't think that, um, there, has ever been, um, a debate as to whether or not we should recognize donors for these two projects. I think there's, what I sensed in our last meeting was strong support and just a desire to, truly think about what all our options are and be, be creative in, um, in how we do that. Um, so I'm really excited to see what you and the playground team come up with for proposals. I'm really excited to hear what the, fields team proposes as well. Um, I, could not agree with you more. Oftentimes, it's the same families and the same businesses that are generously, donating. Without them, we could not do all that we wish to do or want to do, and so we are so, uh, blessed, feel a lot of gratitude, and I think that visual, reminder to the community of, of that gratitude is also incredibly important, so. Uh, it's, it, we want to be really thoughtful and intentional about how, and I'm excited to do that with you all. Um, Chris, Pip.
Oh, I just wanted to say that, you know, there's nothing to say that anybody who does feel like they may not have been recognized in the past for, us not to rectify that as well. It's not, it's never been about, you know, not wanting to. It, it, sometimes it just, uh, didn't happen. So, you know, it, it's never been about that, and it should never change what we do going forward.
That's an excellent point, and if you're someone out there who knows of an instance where acknowledgement didn't take place, um, please be in touch with anyone of our school committee members or, uh, Annie or Chris. Um, we'd love to, um, make sure to rectify that. Great.
Can I?
Okay.
Can I just ask, sorry, sorry. And I totally agree with you, Tara. So, um, Annie and Tara, is, are we, just want to make sure we walk away with clear next step. So if we, um, I know Fred and you, Annie, had talked about ideas for the fields. Tara, you all are coming up with ideas. Is, is that how we want to do it? Is, if I can help, with any of those, I just want to know, you know, what's, what's, what's happening next?
Uh, I would say on the field side, like I said, if I, if it happens that there's a home game prior to, our next school committee meeting, that one thing I want to make sure that we do is that we verbally recognize, it's like a mini non ribbon, ribbon cutting, right? All those people before we walk out on that field to say, so much. And then in May, if we have that, I think Chris, uh, Dee has also been talking with Fred about, um, what I'd like to present is, this is, this is a, an idea that, about, how, you know, what this, what this object looks like that we've put donor names on and where it would be, bring it to the school committee. And again, I'm showing you, what it is, where it's gonna go, who's taking care of it. As I said, when we recognize donors, we don't want their names then to be covered with moss and bird dew, so like, who takes care of it? And whose name is on it and why. Um, and that helps the school committee identify any blind spots, something we're not thinking of. Then we can just move forward with that. And again, in the case of the fields, we'd invite people back again if they wanted to come, or they could, watch it being recorded if Hadley Media could help us out with that.
You thinking something similar, Tara, for the program?
Yeah, so we had, um, in that original donor recognition, I'm really sorry. So, in the original donor recognition, we have stand on doing the ribbon cutting ceremony for the whole recognition, um, uh, certificate, um, of, um, donor recognition that would be provided to the, owner themselves, and there's kind of a tiered level out, um, of who would get that, um, in, in a thank you letter as well to e- every donor that's, free level. Um, and then, um, we had, I think last time I had presented, um, kind of the different options, acts, um, just as the physical recognition, um, and made suggestions on kind of at what level would we consider that donation. Um, what I will tell you is that I think when the project is finished, um, it's gonna be a much smaller donation list, um, that would be considered for the fields, um, as far as the sheer number. So how we recognize might look different, um, than how we recognize for the fields. Um, but I, I think that, I guess from my own opinion, each one of those can look unique to the project that's being done, and doesn't necessarily represent, well, they got a plaque and I got this, or whatever it may be. Um, I think they can be unique to the project, and I think that donors would be appreciative no matter how that, how that looks, so.
That's what we had touched upon on, in our meeting, was that each project has to be addressed individually, because, there, there's always gonna be, you know, unique changes. It's, it's not something that we can actually create a policy on, more just of like a procedure of how to address it. Um, but each is individual.
Right, and project large or small, I think that's what makes it hard to put kind of that, monetary restriction on it too, because you might have a project that's so much smaller that, if you have an overall guideline that's, well, everything is about this now, it doesn't add up for every, every, every project.
Well, I think it, I, I agree, it has to be individualized and maybe, so, I'm hopeful this group that I'm working with is very creative, um, so I think we can come up with something pretty unique and, uh, yeah, to the playground.
Oh. Any other questions or, um, items for discussion on this topic? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Keep us posted, and, um, look forward to, um, moving forward, on the donor recognition for both the fields and the playground. Okay, moving on to item E, we are, uh, next turning our attention to the supplement, Hopkins Academy, um, program of studies with the new, uh, innovation pathway information and the official designation, Annie.
Yes, so as you know, and it's been highlighted in the Gazette, thank you very much to the Gazette for providing information to the community about these new programs at Hopkins Academy. Um, we need to now add these, this information to the program of studies. So as you know, we have two new innovation pathways, one in clean energy, and another in information sciences, and because we're adding this to the program of studies, which you approve, I'm requesting that you approve that the supplemental information be included. We will not be including the letter from Desi that was just for the public in the school committee.
Excellent, thank you. Do I hear a motion to add the clean energy, um, and information, sciences, uh, innovation pathways to the program of studies as a supplement?
So moved.
I can do it.
All in favor?
I.
I. And congratulations to the entire team who, um, helped earn these two, um, designations. I cannot emphasize enough how, um, how important these are. Clean energy and information sciences are, uh, really important and growing areas, and having our students have internships and experiences, um, in these fields is really going to set them up well for our future, so. Thank you to the entire, uh, team at, um, Hadley Public Schools.
I'm at a, a clean energy conference right now in New Orleans, thousands of people, so it's, uh, it's getting bigger.
Can you line up some virtual internships for our students while you're there?
I don't know about New Orleans, but, uh, maybe around us, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, moving on to item F, this is a discussion and vote on the, uh, SOA plan, Annie.
Student Opportunity Act. This is when, uh, the legislature amended, the, uh, school finance law, the Mass General Law over school finance, chapter seventy-one. Um, I did not provide the entire grant workbook because of it's hosted on the web in a grant portal for the department, but you have in your packet this summary. Hadley Public Schools, the town of Hadley does not get a significant amount of money under the changes to the Student Opportunity Act, because Hadley Public Schools is in what's called hold harmless. What the town gets is roughly thirty dollars per pupil in additional funding. That comes to just over fourteen thousand dollars. We, um, you're required as part of the legislation to identify an evidence-based practice as defined by the state, that you will implement, um, and apply your SOA funds toward. Uh, one of those evidence-based practices are high-quality college and career pathways, so we use our funding, to, um, toward the salaries of those people who support these programs. That's, and it is required by law that the school committee votes as, we'll tell you it was due on April first, and so I made sure it was submitted. Desi does know that you're voting after the fact on it, um, but it is required by law, and I have to report to them, for some reason, uh, you decide to, um, not vote on it at front, no.
Thank you, Annie. Do I hear a motion to approve the Student Opportunities Act Plan as outlined by Annie?
So moved.
I can do it.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Terrific. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are moving on to item G, Hopkins Academy Open House on April twenty-fifth, Annie.
Yes, and if you don't mind, Humira, I'll just briefly touch on the open house and the school choice enrollments. Uh, at Hopkins Academy, at Hadley Elementary School, we still do open house in the fall. Some of the families really enjoy getting to know, their children's teachers, and we've moved Hopkins Academy to the spring, because now we can, uh, we have, as you see in the next agenda item. Um, it's up to our, our school choice applications that we've received are up to forty right now, so we have invited all of those families. Um, in this, all the Hopkins families in this case, and anybody, our HES families also, that are choosing, and are welcome to come to the Hopkins over, open house. We try very hard to do something different, so you see that there are different sessions that families can go to, talking about how small schools support all learners and how we are able to individualize education. We have a jazz band demo. Um, we have Ms. Seer and Mr. Simmons and a representative from Greenfield Community College, talking about early college, high school, and innovation pathways. We have presentations on restorative justice and, um, social emotional learning and support, and as I said earlier, uh, international travel and service learning opportunities at Hopkins. Uh, in addition, uh, giving people time to visit their children's classrooms. So it's really learning about all of the opportunities, that, um, students have who come to Hopkins. And again, we really, I, I think every single family that chooses Hadley Public Schools, thank you very much for our school choice families who have submitted, applications for twenty twenty-five. As you can see, uh, we had forty applications so far that we've received. Uh, we have currently ten seniors who are choice-receiving, so they, they choice into our district from another district. If all forty of these families, um, decided to attend Hadley Public Schools, we would be looking at a net gain in school choice of thirty families at this point next year, which is fantastic. And that is a tribute, um, to our governance, meaning our school committee that supports investments in really high-quality programs, but it's really a tribute to the leadership in our buildings and to our teachers, and, uh, all the clubs they advise and everything they do, and to our students, because most students do a shadow day at Hadley Elementary School and Hopkins Academy. Students, um, I think when students go and do a shadow day, they're really deciding, are these, are these people I want to hang out with every day? And so thank you to our students for making this a place that other students want to come to.
Thank you, Annie. That's excellent. Forty additional applications, that's, that's a terrific, uh, uh, number, and, uh, this open house program looks fantastic. I think, uh, I think I'm going to be attending, um, because it just, there's so much here that I want to learn and, and know about too, so. Uh, thank you for sharing that. Any questions or comments, for Annie about either the open house or the school choice seats?
One question and one comment. Um, so for the open house, did we, um, add, present this to the sixth grade class too, or I don't even know if it, is this considered in fifth grade for them to kind of attend and excitement?
Yeah, I want to say, yes, we did do that. Um, we've done a lot, so you know, of other things like going down to sixth grade and talking to them about, here's the counseling team, here's what you can expect, here's all the clubs, so I do believe that we did, but I will double check.
It's just exciting, I think, for kids to, when you, especially when you have kind of that agenda up, for kids to be able to kind of roam through and explore, if, especially if they're on the fence. Um, just making sure that they know it's well from and open, um, as well, and I will be there, um, representing, um, the PTO.
And I'll probably be there with the mother's glove as well, so, because both Tara and I were there last year, and it was, it was very well done.
Fun. Yep, it was fun.
Yeah, it was great, so hopefully a lot of people will attend.
Excellent, thank you.
Tara, did, did you have some, I thought you had two things. You done?
Oh, those were my two things, yeah, asking about, yeah, and then that I'd be there.
So I, I just curious, Annie, your perspective on the, I mean, clearly, as a parent, you'd, you'd want to get your kid in, early, so that's why we see such a, a jump in kindergarten. But is that the only reason? Or is there another reason why we see so many people interested in kindergarten?
I would say, I mean, it can across the board. I feel as though our teachers, our schools, and our students have a really fine reputation. Um, of course, I know that I'm biased, but really, we can also think about, you know, some of the awards I've brought and, I've brought, and that's good. People want to come to the school district. Don't worry, I'm not teaching your kids, so.
Christine, is that, is that proper, Christine?
It's dying right now. I brought to your attention examples of even whether it's, coaches from other districts and umpires, and just how many times people comment on, our students and just how wonderful they are. So I think overall, there's a wonderful reputation, and I will say, Hadley Preschool and our early ed has a really phenomenal reputation, and that is about the people, that team working there. It's about the friends of Hadley Pre-K who do a phenomenal job. So I think there is a lot of energy around early ed, and that is a community-wide team effort. Those parents that do all that heavy lifting in that friends of program, and, um, that team. So I think that's another reason that you see a lot of, uh, energy in early ed.
And I think, I think it's also that if the kids start in kindergarten, they, they, grow with the class. I mean, they, they, you know, their full experience is straight through. Um, and that's, you know, i- i- it, you can, you can see how that would be beneficial to have the kids, begin with their class and, and continue on. So that might be, you know, some of the thinking behind starting in kindergarten.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So many amazing things about our kindergarten and our elementary school. I mean, how many have Spanish programs for elementary schools? It's the first that I've heard of. So very, very proud of our, our schools. And I'm not surprised that we, our enrollment applications are up. And great job to the team that just provides excellent education and excellent experience. And, and thank you for that. All right, great. So no items to, no actions to vote on for either of these things. We're going to move to next to item I, which is the Desi Special Education Civil Rights Audit of Hadley Public Schools, Annie.
Just briefly, more great news. I say often that I would like Hadley Public Schools to be the destination district for families of students with disabilities. In our most recent Desi audit of our special education and it's, and it also included a civil rights audit. We were in compliance on all things. There were absolutely no findings and no corrective actions. You have a special education staff that are superstars. And you have a director of special education, Celia Snow, that is just hits the ball out of the park. So we're quite fortunate. And I know I'd sent this to you all, but I wanted to acknowledge Celia, our special education team writ large, and all of our staff and administrators who ensure that we create environments where students with disabilities are included. Their rights are protected and the civil rights of all are protected.
Congratulations to the whole team. This is incredible, this document that you've provided. Twenty-three pages of requirements to comply with and to have no findings. And, and to be, have a completely clean audit. This is, it's quite a feat. We're very proud. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, you're married. I've been on school committee nine years. I know you've been longer. I don't think I've ever seen this. Where there was nothing, nothing on the report, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall seeing it either. Annie, how often does this happen?
Every three years, I think you're in a cycle and there's mid-cycles. And yes, so this is your ten for me. And there have always been corrective actions. This is the first time that there have been absolutely none.
Impressive.
Wow, that's very impressive. Excellent. Okay. We're going to move next to item J, Updated Capital Plan.
Okay, so I have added the updated capital plan to your meeting package. It, it really just kind of color codes items for the past couple of years and next year into whether they're completed or not. Those are the items in green. If they're in progress, that means that we've gotten estimates for them and, and we're just waiting for the vendor to be able to come and do them. There were a couple of items that were canceled just because we were told that they didn't really need to do these things. One of them, for example, adding ventilation and air conditioning units to data and custodial closets. And that was kind of determined in, in speaking with Steve, our IT director, who said that we didn't really need ventilation in the data closets because there were no heat-producing items in the closet, just switches, which didn't produce any heat. So they didn't really need to be cooled. And, you know, the custodial closets, if you can imagine your typical kind of hallway closet with a very narrow door, they don't go in very deeply. So you're, you're talking a sink and some mops. And you know, not, not really something that requires cooling. So it was just kind of determined that, boy, we don't really need that. We moved it way out into twenty thirty-one, thirty-two and marked it in red with, you know, canceled with a question mark because it, it didn't seem to be really something that was needed. We also had a couple of items, let's see. New funding, oh, I guess I don't have any, I take that back, I'm sorry, of new funding needed. Right now, we don't, we don't have any of those. But I did just kind of move items up and down on the report because they were, they were kind of spread around. And if you see, like, if you look at all of the HVAC items, for example, are now together and they're all in the same year and they all have a black box around them so that we know, you know, these items are going to be taking place really all at the same time. It wouldn't make much sense to, you know, say, do the pneumatic controls one, one year and then the boilers in another, where, you know, as we know with the energy project, that's all going to be one project. And so the adjustments were made just really to, to represent that they're one project. I think another item are the bricks. We have rebuilt top of chimney. We did the south end of the building last year. But, you know, recock expansion and control joints, exterior masonry needs to be repointed. And the brick retaining wall next to the bus drop off. And we just decided again that why wouldn't we just have somebody that could come and quote, for all of these jobs at once and take care of them all at the same time? We just might get, because it's a larger job, we might get something that, you know, price-wise, it would just be better. It's a bigger job. It's easier for a contractor to come and know that they're going to do four jobs than to have them come four separate times, bring all their tools and equipment each time. You know, certainly there's cost involved in that, just loading trucks and bringing everything here. So those were the changes really that were made. And off to the, to the right, I just put comments, you know, like moved from FY twenty-four, say, for some of them, or moved after the HVAC project for something like the ceiling tiles. Because unfortunately, we just can't do that beforehand. Otherwise, we'll be taking them down to run the ductwork. So this was really just an attempt to schedule things more appropriately, given that we had these, you know, the, the HVAC project, the, the big one. That really affected a number of these items and, and we thought it would be better to just put them all together.
Thank you, Chris. I, I really appreciate the bundling of like projects. It makes a lot of sense. Not only for us to wrap our head around what those projects are, but also I think you, you ended up moving things from years that had a like category. Really appreciate that, that the way you did that. I do have a question about the HVAC list of funds. Those are funds to execute on the plan that we originally had, which was to replace our steam boilers with steam boilers. It's not a new plan because we have not yet approved that. Just clarifying question there.
Well, yes, those are, I mean, it, I wasn't really sure how to handle something like that. We're not going to replace them with new steam boilers. We're going to be replacing them with the geothermal heat, assuming of course that, that that works out, you know, the way we expect it to.
Right.
But for the time being, until we got the plans that actually got everything approved, I thought it was best to just keep them there, but put them in line with the rest of the HVAC projects.
Absolutely. Terrific. Any other questions or comments for Chris on the Capitol Report?
I just appreciate the amount of work that went into doing this and being a visual person. I think this was, this is a great way for me to, you know, see how everything's going. It's perfect.
Yeah, seconded.
The layout a lot of this as well compared to past renditions. This is, I, I love the, the living document. I had one question. Before, did we have the school choice funding for the hundred thousand for the playground on here? Did we not have it on there?
I'm trying to find.
Because I know it was school choice, so I was just curious because we have some school choice on here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't find it, which bothers the heck out of me. Is it toward the top of the report?
No, I don't see it. That's my question. I thought you had it on there before.
Okay, I'd have to look at prior versions. I don't believe I took anything out and certainly not that, that we know is going to be on there. So I can certainly check past versions. And if not, a-again, because this document can change so often and so quickly, I can add that in. That, that's not a problem there at all. I guess that would explain why I couldn't see it because.
Yeah, and I think perhaps maybe where you remember seeing it, Tara, is we did post up the Excel spreadsheet about school choice encumbrances.
Might be where I saw it.
Could be, yeah.
What we've encumbered money for. So, but it makes sense to add it and we can bring that back at a future meeting. But I'm sure that's where you saw it and it was never on Capitol Plan. But we can add it.
Yeah, you're, I think you're right.
Okay. Also, you know, if you, if the committee just gives me the okay, I like to keep the town informed of any changes, any reschedulings or anything. So I'd love to be able to share this, you know, with the, the town manager and, you know, the town accountant, the town treasurer, just so they have this kind of on their radar.
They should probably vote it because it's been amended. So it's on there to vote.
I think that we should vote it tonight and then bring it back, of course, and we'll add the new additional playground line item when you have that added as well. Any other questions or comments on this from a school committee deliberation standpoint? Okay, and I'm going to ask Joyce. I see Joyce has her hand raised. Joyce, do you have a comment on this?
I don't know if I missed it or not, but where are we on the locker rooms where we voted on that last fall and approved? Did I miss that in your report, Chris?
It's, it's on here.
I believe it's row fifty-six, renovate and repurpose girls locker room areas. And then row fifty-seven is the boys locker room. It's, it's there, Joyce.
Oh, I don't have, I didn't have that in front of me.
Just a brief update. Is that what you're looking for, Joyce?
Yes, yes, please. Just so that, so that the public can hear where we might be with that.
So the designer has been selected. I am just working on finishing up. I just got the pricing from them. You know, kind of a pricing schedule. We want this percent at this point of the project, this percent at this point. Along with somewhat of a schedule that they're going to meet with us to see what we want in the locker rooms. I'm incorporating all that into the, into the contract document. I expect to have that to them probably by Thursday of this week.
Do you have a committee for that that's working with you, Chris, on, on redesigning the locker rooms? Are you just going to leave that for the design team? Did, does other people like Fred and others, coaches have an idea of what they want?
Yes. So what we're going to do is it, it's going to be like a kickoff meeting with the designers. They will come to the school. They're going to view the locker rooms and see the challenges that they're facing, certainly with space, space and, and, and other challenges that are there. And at that meeting, we will have the gym teacher, the athletic director, the facilities director, and myself in attendance. We're expecting to use a small portion of the locker room for storage for the facilities department off to the side of, of one of them. So it's good to have all of those people there. Fred, of course, will speak with the coaches ahead of time to, to see what individual coaches might need. But that's, that's the plan at this point in time.
Yeah, I know the boys locker room was larger than the girls locker room for sure.
It, it was larger. It's the boys locker room that will be losing some of the space for facility storage.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was just wondering where it was. Thank you so much.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the Capitol Plan as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
I.
I. All right, motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone. And moving on to the business manager report, Chris.
All right, so I have three items for you tonight to present. The first one, boy, I have so many things open here. Let's see. The expense report is the first one. A number of grant transfers were made. There's still a few more to go. And I just wanted to explain a couple of items here. Not really items in the report, but I guess showing up in the total. So at this point in time, we have about two point one million dollars left, which is pretty much right in line with what we need for the remainder of the payroll, payrolls that we have, as well as the encumbrances that we have. We did send out an email today essentially closing off spending for FY twenty-four as of this coming Friday. Usually, and, and of course, in the email, I did mention that, you know, obviously if you have a need such, you know, something like toner or copy paper, please know, we don't want you to go without this stuff. But at this point in time, you know, it's the end of April. Most purchases, you know, have already been made, certainly to get us through the end of the year. And what this allows us to do is to close out all of these POs, run them out. So we're not looking at the end of the year with seventy-five purchase orders still open of varying amounts. And so a lot of the, when I transfer expenses to the grants, you know, a lot of times we don't know how much the grant is going to be when the budget is prepared and when we create some of the initial purchase orders. So items like special ed tuition, for example, the encumbrance is in the general fund. Even though we are going to place the expense in the grant or in circuit breaker. So we actually have slightly more than the two point one million dollars that you see on the report. We have encumbrances that as soon as the expense hit and the encumbrance gets reduced, I'm transferring it over to the grant. So it's actually a little bit higher than that. So it gives us a little bit of cushion. But nevertheless, I just wanted to point that out so you didn't get surprised if after a month comes by or something and gee, you're still at the same total you were last month. You know, that's, that just explains why we're at that particular level.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Chris on this? All right. And the revolving account, I see lunch has bounced back.
Thankfully, yes. It has come back to a thirty thousand dollar balance. I, you know, if you look at last year's, you can see that, you know, we ended the year with fifty-three, then we dropped a little bit, you know, as some more June expenses came through in July. And then in August, we got a couple of payments that, that bumped us way up. Usually, you know, there are a couple of months behind the state is in giving us reimbursements. So what will happen is, you know, we'll see something somewhat similar to that happening over this summer, you know, where we'll get a bump up with no expenses, but revenues coming in. So, you know, hopefully, I mean, if we can just finish the year or, or start next year at around the same fifty-three thousand dollar level, that would be, you know, pretty good for us because we had some major expenses this year. And i- if I can just kind of dovetail off that for a second, apparently, from what I've been told, the flavor stations at the, certainly at Hopkins, has been a major hit with the students. They absolutely love it, is, is the feedback I was told. And I know at HES, there was, there was a little bit of a delayed start at HES. It will begin soon, but we moved somebody over to that school and because the cooking was being done there and, you know, I mean, just there, it was kind of starting it from scratch. It hadn't, cooking hadn't been done there in a while. So they delayed the launch of the flavor station at that school. But, you know, I mean, it, it's so nice to, to see feedback come back with, with positive results. So, you know, very happy for them. And I can go back to the revolving report now. Student activity got a bump up, you know, basically field trips were being deposited into and had not been expensed out yet. So we got a little bit of a, an increase in the student activity. The Hadley Kids Account is, is doing very well, forty-one thousand. I did transfer the, about two-thirds of the budgeted amount of school choice expenses. I don't really anticipate more. That's, that's what I plan on right now, barring any unforeseen circumstances where I think we've done all of the expenses to school choice that we're going to have to do. So that's certainly a good sign. And, and that's pretty much it for the revolving account. I don't know if anyone has any questions there?
No questions but a comment. I heard from my daughter that the flavor station was, was mobbed and is, is a big hit. So congratulations. Whatever you're doing is, is working.
Yeah, it was great to hear that. It truly was.
Any other thoughts?
Just on the school choice of that one point nine, that's after you made the withdrawal?
That's correct. We had about, I think, six hundred thousand of expenses went to school choice. We budgeted, I believe, nine, nine or nine twenty-five. I don't remember exactly, but it was one or the other.
Okay, thanks.
Sometimes it's a quick comment. Um, I'm excited to get some feedback from the elementary school about the flavor stations. And I did get feedback. They do Papa John's pizza on Friday. And my fifth grader did come home after the first week and said. There was a snafu and there was a delay in pizza for a lot of kids who didn't want to look into. And I had luckily already been aware from it from, from an email, but in, in, and I know. Resolution and I could, could assure him and his, his other fifth grade friends that already worked out a plan. But they love the pizza.
Yeah, apparently the roadwork caused quite the delay in the pizza being delivered. Again, something that was unforeseen, certainly by us and also by Papa John's. So. You know, we just suggested that they might find an alternate route to the school during the road construction phases. So. That's, you know, again, sometimes the best laid plans still have problems presented. And this was one of them, but you know, as long as there's a solution.
Indeed. Okay, moving on to the grant allocations.
Okay, so. This is the grant report. As you can see, there's significantly more expense from the grant than there was the last one. I did a very large number of journal entries to move expenses over to the grant. Couple of things I just wanted to point out. The second grant on here, the S R three grant. You can see we have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars remaining. That needs to be expended by, actually not expended, but. Planned expenses, I guess. We need to have it encumbered or spent by September thirtieth of this year. Which will be fine because two fifty of that is for the HVAC design work. And then I still have to do another twenty thousand of expense transfers over, which will be done this month. So. I, you know, it just looked like a huge amount and I just wanted you to be aware that there's nothing to worry about. We will have it fully spent. The other one is a little, I guess it's about maybe almost two thirds of the way down. The three thirty-two grant. You can see is actually negative. It's not, I did the journal entries after I ran this report. I forgot to go back and change it, but I moved the expenses. Out of the grant and back to where they belong. So that is no longer in the negative. So. I just wanted to point those two items out. I can answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Questions for Chris? No questions. All right, great. Thank you so much, Chris.
And we just had one other item and that was the warrants. And and I met last week, I think it was to work on grants, and we just quickly went over the school committee agenda. And and she said, are we missing anything? And I said, you know what? I haven't seen in a while are warrant approvals. On the, on the agenda. So I need to go back and just. Look at when the last time we actually voted them and then I'll, I'll, you know. Put something together so that you know exactly what you need to vote on to approve them. But yeah, we need to, you know, get that caught up. I'm also a little behind in sending them out to Ann and Ethan to sign. So you'll be getting a decent amount of warrants. So get your mouses ready. Mice, I guess mice ready to. To approve those.
It's good. Thank you. Let me say for the parents again, neither Chris nor I will be teaching your children English, so you're good.
I did learn from Ann on.
Rotting mouses.
Okay, technically I have to time in, you know, I'm gonna have to, but when it comes to computer equipment, it is technically correct to say mouses, not mice.
All right.
I knew that.
Yeah, okay, I see how it is.
That makes sense. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, well, we look forward to seeing an update on the warrants next month and signing and taking care of that housekeeping. Appreciate. You bringing that to our attention. All right, any final questions on the business manager report for Chris? Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we're going to scan our action items. I believe we have voted on approved everything. We are except for E. Do I hear a motion to approve the school committee minutes from March twenty-fifth?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Hi, excellent. Onward to school committee updates and general announcements. Tara, tell us about. Playground, CPAC and CES.
Go backwards because it's quicker. So CES, I just sent that out to you guys. I apologize. I'm bad at sending out. So we will not have another meeting until May, but I sent out the director's. Report that goes through a little bit of what's been going on at CES. And the last meeting. That I went to in March, we spent a good amount of time reviewing the director's. Evaluation and kind of how we could improve it. So that was nice informative discussion and it's always nice to hear kind of what's been going on. It's not too long of a document. It's a pretty cool food if you want to read through it. You know, overall, everyone provides a lot of really, really good feedback. To the director there. So I find it just to be really, even if you don't have a lot to add as far as feedback. It's informative to listen in on people's. So that's CES. So I won't have another update on that until probably. Probably June because the May meeting will happen after our. After our school committee meeting in May. CPAC, there is a next CPAC meeting. They did not meet last month, but that meeting was canceled. There's another meeting this coming. Friday, where I believe they're going to finalize their bylaws and create a. Create an agenda and schedule of what the following school year is going to look like. And I think they're going to sign officers as well. So I'll have a report for next month of that. And I'd be happy to also share their, their schedule of the end events as soon as they have that. Kind of finalized. And then the playground, I did forget again to send this out to you. And so I'll send this to her. So you'll have it in the documents for. April and I'll do May update as well, but just to verbally tell you. Last time we were about to receive the check from Steve Lewis Subaru and we did receive. A twenty-five thousand dollar check from Steve Lewis Subaru. We will get the remainder of that. In the fall, I believe, for the next share of the law. So we did, we did receive that. We have that on hand. And we are working to follow up with some donors that have graciously agreed to pledge a donation, but we have to receive those. So we're following up with those. I did speak with the board at, few of the board members for the PTO. And, excuse me, I'm helping hearts. Organization dissolved. They took approximately, I don't know these. Approximately eight thousand dollars that they had left in their account. And donated it to the PTO with the stipulation that the money would be divided in half. And half of it would go to the high school and half of it would go to the elementary school. I had a conversation with the board. And while four thousand dollars high school is absolutely wonderfully fantastic, the projects that are going on there are. Comparative to how a four thousand dollar donation would go towards. Farther, excuse me, than it would at the high school. So they did actually ask if the entire donation. Approximately, I don't know, approximately eight thousand dollars, it could be a little over. Could go towards the playground project and they did receive approval from that helping heart board. That we could use that money. So that money will get added to the pot of donated funds. The last time we met as a group to fundraising, we decided that we're going to have a table at the asparagus festival. So we'll be talking on Wednesday of what that's going to look like, gaining awareness. Doing some fun game type activities when Karen had the idea of doing. Asparagus bowling where your bowling pins are asparagus. And asking for like a donation or something to do that. So we're going to talk a little bit more about logistics on. On Wednesday, what that will look like. The group also would really like to do bingo night. And so the logistics of that being worked out, the when, the where, the how are still in process. We're going to try and narrow some of that down. As well. And then the potential of that bingo night kind of turning into something that happens. Maybe a little bit more frequently taken on by PTO and having it be kind of a community wide event and trying to incorporate. The greater community outside of just our school communities, more than just parents and teachers and whatnot, but trying to reach others in the community. So what else could I not tell you? So we, Jen and I did meet with. A vendor for the playgrounds. We are going to be getting two different estimates and sketches in. I've been in talks with owner for the vendor group that. We decided to use. And so we are anticipating that within the next week, we're going to have. More pretty good sketches of what the ideas of the playground would look like from both. Both playground vendors, as well as associated costs. That will help us kind of. Narrow down exactly how much we really have. And I have spoken with the Friends of Hadley preschool. Board members last month and we had a discussion about how we could go about looking to seek a donation from them. That would cover the costs of the BKK playground. And so where we landed on that was it would be helpful to them to have a more precise number. Of what that would look. So as soon as I get those estimates back, they're going to be presented to the Friends of Hadley preschool. With the goal of seeking an entire fully funded. Donation that would cover the entire cost of them. So I think they'll be able to better answer that once they know exactly kind of what they're getting. Not they, it's not theirs, but what would be received and for what cost. So. I'm very hopeful that next month I will be able to tell you that they have donated the entire cost of that. And any funds that we've raised thus far will be voted. One through six playground. And hopefully next month I can also show you guys what proposals are to. It's really exciting.
That's excellent progress, Tara. Thank you so much. Huge thanks to. Not, not prematurely, but the Hadley, Friends of Hadley preschool have been so dedicated and passionate and we're. Really excited to, to work with them again on this project. So thank you for forging that partnership and. Really, really glad to hear that that's coming along well. Look forward to more developments next month. Moving on to finance, I will just remind everyone to please come to annual town meeting, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, May first. At Hopkins Academy, May first.
Wednesday.
Thursday, annual town meeting, first Thursday. Did I just, sorry if I have this messed up. Let me just check really quickly. Joyce, you want to chime in? It's the first Thursday, correct?
I gotta mute myself.
Yeah, May second is the town meeting.
Thank you.
It is the second.
Yes, it is.
Thank you so much. Okay, and that is a seven PM start?
Yes.
All right. So thank you. Not this Thursday, but the following Thursday, May second at seven PM. At the Hopkins Academy. And please be sure to attend, not only to participate in. Our important institution of annual town meeting, but also to help vote in the school budget, which is very, very important. So thank you. And Joyce, don't go far because I'll be calling on you in just a moment. But we're gonna keep moving forward. We're almost done with this agenda. Paul, you gave us an update on fields. Is there anything else you want to say about that? Okay.
Now we're good.
All right, thank you. And Christine Pip, we approved the capital plan as it stands today. Is there anything else you want to say about that?
No, we're good to go.
Okay, great. And Ethan, we heard about the policy discussion on the recognition and naming strategy. Did the policy committee have any other updates?
That was really the focus for today's meeting.
Okay, excellent. Well, given that we're at the end of our agenda and we do not have an executive session. I would like to make two brief announcements. We should add back in the announcement section of our agenda. It just, yes. So the first is. I wanted to extend on behalf of the school committee. Our deepest condolences to the Ginsburg family on the passing of Beth Ginsburg, an important. You know, mom in our community and just beloved by so many. And we're just so sad to hear about her passing. And on an entirely different note, this may or may not be the last school committee. Meeting that has Joyce Chunglo on it as our select board representative. And I wanted to start by saying how much we have appreciated your participation in all of our meetings and just, you know. Popping up a level, your commitment and volunteerism in the town. As a school committee member and now as select board, I haven't seen, what I heard is a glowing article in the paper about you. And I'm not surprised. We're gonna miss you. And I'd like to. Propose something super cheesy on behalf of our school committee. I'd like to propose a three cheers, a hip hip parade for Joyce Chunglo. It's your beats, a plaque or a recognition. And it's super cheesy, but hopefully an expression of our gratitude for you and. So on the count of three, one, two, three. There you go.
Love you, Joyce.
You know, I want to say thank you so much. I wished I was able to attend more meetings, but with executive sessions popping up so. Often lately and always on a Monday night, I have felt bad that I really wanted to skip the executive meetings and come to your select board meetings. But I want to say that, you know, from day one, when I was on school committee to now moving out of my. Political arena, I will always, always have the school department. As one of my most cherished times in politics. Not only have my kids gone through the system, I've seen so many children flourish. That they are our backbone of our community. And I have always said that, you know, what we put into our education is what we will get back in the long run. So you will always have my support, whether or not I'm on a committee or not. I will always stand up for the school department and. You have been certainly. A wonderful school committee, those that are on it and what you do for our community. How you have moved the school department from when I was on it to what it is now. It's just been outstanding and you have great leadership and Dr. McKenzie. And all of your teachers and everybody, including yourselves. So. I just truly appreciate everybody that participates in our school department because. It is top of the line as far as I'm concerned in this Western Mass, absolutely.
Way to make me cry.
We're gonna miss you and we, we know that you're not going far. So thank you for continuing to be an advocate of the schools. We will likely be.
If you need somebody on a committee for something, I can available to whatever. So keep that in mind also.
Consider.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, our next meeting dates are, let's see, May twentieth. There will be a four thirty policy subcommittee. Followed by five thirty regular school committee. So see you all on May twentieth. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Bye. Aye.